We're gonna have, Roy's not in today. Yeah, we're here.
Yep.
We are, we're good to go. Let's go. Everybody can stand?
Okay, great.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, if everyone's had a chance to review the minutes, I'll look for voting. Any discussion about the minutes? No? All favor or opposed? Any opposed? Alright, great. Moving on to the resolutions of the day, I believe we have an appointment, which I think everyone has had an opportunity to review, for the Fish and Wildlife Management Board, actually reappointments of a number of them. There was one bill that we determined that everyone of these folks are interested in definitely planning on serving, right? And there's one gentleman here we wanted to verify. He's still on the list, so I assume. Okay. So I'm sure whoever is, as far as I believe, he is the one who's. Okay, perfect. So if we could, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Hey, thank you. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Excellent. Okay, is there any discussion about this group? Again, I believe the vast majority are reappointments. I'll look for vote, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One vote? Let's move on to resolution. Let's move on to resolution two. Kevin Project authorized chairman to accept and disperse related funds related to the septic system for mobile homes and manufacturing. Dave wants to chat about that a little bit.
Yeah, this is, there's several pieces to this grant program. Because what it does is, first we have to find eligible participants. And then when we do, there's demolition piece. Sometimes in demolition, there's asbestos abatement. If you have asbestos abatement in demolition, you're gonna have air monitoring. The law doesn't allow those contractors to be the same. You can't have the box watching the hen house, basically. So there's also then new construction and purchase of new mobile homes for those veterans whose homes you're taking away. And then sometimes they also need help with their water while they're septic system. So there's a lot of pieces to this grant program. And this is just one of those. And you'll notice at the bottom, the name of the contractor is not there yet. We're still waiting for. It's in the new one?
It's in the bid packet. It's on your bid report. Your bid report is there. Bid eighteen dash nineteen septic systems for mobile manufacturing homes.
Okay.
Alright, and it looks like the low bidder is Homes Contract.
So for the first one. And that, oh, this doesn't have to go to floor for a bid, right? Just a committee?
We didn't know. Resolution had been written before, so I assume the grant required a resolution. So that's why we put it in the form of a resolution.
Okay.
So I don't know whether it does or not. If it's a...
In our normal process?
In our normal process, it would not require a resolution.
Yeah.
If the grant, because we received a resolution with the agenda requests. It makes sense to me that it must be a requirement of the grant to hit the body mode. If not, you could just, you don't need to do the resolution or store it.
I don't think that there's a requirement in the grant. They just want some formalized acceptance. And so this will finalize the acceptance as opposed to just being in the minutes.
Okay, so resolution two, EP two then is unnecessary. I'll need to do is award the bid.
Perfect. So we don't need a resolution, but we need to vote? Is that correct?
Yeah, a motion need to be made to accept the low bid on bid eighteen dash nineteen, awarding the bid to Homes Contract. Who's the one bid on the... I'll make the motion.
Can I look for a second? Oh, we talked just a little bit about that. So the pricing that it looks on here, is that per? I'm trying to understand here, because they've got full price for homes of thirty thousand four hundred and nineteen compared to thirty five thousand with a excavating and seventy for some alone excavate. The question is, what is that? Because we talked about setting up a six hundred thousand dollar project here for six projects, or six individual projects, or maybe locations, I guess.
So six hundred includes all those various pieces I talked about? Not just the well and septic?
Okay.
So some of the six hundred is air monitoring, some is demolition. This chart is specific. The bids for these are kind of generic because each site is specific as to what it needs.
Okay. So David, when it has three locations as part of this bid, are those three locations already picked?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And they're only three of the six that we ultimately hope to do, is that correct?
Well, not each of the recipients requires well or septic services. At least we have it too.
Okay, understood. So do you already have the six projects that we're hoping to help pick?
Yes.
Okay. So these three are the ones that do require it. We don't expect that there's any additional needed in the future from... Okay, perfect. Okay, any other questions? Any questions? Look for a vote, all favor? Is that a little bidder? Any opposed? Thank you. EP two. Moving on to, I guess, what is labeled EP three, is that correct? I don't have that right?
Yeah.
That would be asbestos removal prior demolition of the dilapidated mobile homes and manufacturing homes. That's in relation to the previous one, correct? Yes. Okay. Is that, is that a second bid as well? Or is it just?
There's lower bidding reports, so asbestos removal requires licensing, so maybe you consider professional service, which is why you've got that.
Okay. And this is awarding in two. JAG environment, it's cap rope, not to exceed ten thousand.
How many people bid this?
I don't know on that specific one.
Well, Phil, you were saying, I believe that there was not a bid, correct? This was just because it was professional service that was awarded to... Are you correct?
Quotes. That'll sign out for you.
Can you explain professional services to me?
Professional services are things like architecture, engineering, computer, and other things that require professional licenses to operate. Not necessarily electrician, but things that where there's a... Services that require certain, in addition to basic quarrels, professional judgments, like you would find in legal services, engineering, architecture, things like that. I believe asbestos removal, it can go either way, but this is apparently done as a professional service.
But, I mean, in the past, wouldn't we have normally bid this?
It was bid. Bids were solicited. I don't know what was that.
But I mean, I just, I've never heard professional services a lot, I guess.
Professionals, that's generally when we, when you see an RFP versus a bid, RFPs are for professional services because you can, there's no requirement to go with the lowest bid. You go with the most qualified person at firm you're comfortable with to provide the service that you want.
And that qualification is determined by department head?
Some of it's determined by licensing, if that's required.
Who's the determiner? Who does that?
Whoever reviews the RFPs, that's usually a team of people that involves staff knowledgeable in the area from within the departments. Anything legal would be reviewed by county attorney. Engineering, and it's usually through highway department, they'll evaluate those. Architecture through buildings and grounds. People who have knowledge in the area within the county that put together two or three people who are in RFP team to review them and make the best selection. Very often, the selection is the lowest proposer, and sometimes it's not. It can be scored based on the references, your past experience with that firm. If they've done good work for you, you've got a relationship with them, worked with them, you can do it that way. So it's not like, it's not like bids where the state requires that you go with the lowest responsive response.
Is there a number cutoff on that?
Legislature should can determine that normally. It's, you buy by, you know, so if they feel a service, if they feel a proposal is, you know, would meet their needs, but it's more than they want to spend, maybe they can choose some, another proposal who can do the same thing, or come from a...
But this was not an RFP, correct? This was a bid?
It were, it was bid, according to the resolution. I don't know if the resolution had come out of your office.
Down to you. Because it, I don't have any bid results showing you low, only bidder, or anything like that. I would assume with the ten thousand dollar price tag, they just picked off of maybe a...
My guess is it was written quotes because it's less than the bid threshold.
Okay, so maybe the wording in the resolution?
Yeah, it should be quotes instead of bids. I could double check on that. This is in final form, but it's below ten thousand, so there's no legal requirement to bid it. They would just got three quotes.
Yeah, there was quotes. There was some confusion in the beginning. An Dog County felt that this needed to be bid as a prevailing wage job. But the grant administrator in Albany said, no, here's a language from our program that says it does not have to be. And so there was quotes received, and then someone, I believe they went back a second time because Anadog County submitted it to people. They said this is gonna be prevailing wage. And then all the folks in Albany said, no, it doesn't have to be. And they went back to those people and said, okay, now it's not gonna be. And that's how we ended up with JAG in the process. They gave me this lowest.
Any more questions? Might be more helpful if we could have that as part of the package. Okay.
Back to your question now. Sometimes, for example, it can be subjective for if you're looking for architects or design professionals, you know? The one firm might envision something entirely different than what you're hoping for, and somebody else might be spot on to what you're looking for. And so the RFP gives you the flexibility to sort through people who are, like, have the same kind of focus that you do. Maybe they can do it faster, or maybe they're willing to work with our people instead of having all outside contractors. A lot of variables that make a RFP...
Money.
The flexibility of a RFP advantageous.
So, and it could help us possibly to use more local contractors going forward?
If, if, if you're, if you want to, if the local proposer is, meets all the scope and you're comfortable with it, then yeah, you can. You're not allowed to do that on bid, you can. But you can't RFP something that's legally required to be a bid.
Understood.
Knowing the list of professional services in our purchasing policy.
And the state's got a, state's got a definition of professional services.
Do we have a list of preferred bidders?
Yes.
In certain categories.
Can I get all of those categories?
Well, each department maintains those in there. But what happens with a bid is when they request a bid, Anandaya County has a form that you fill out. And if there are preferred bidders or preferred companies that we want directly solicited, in other words, they don't have to rely on seeing it in the newspaper, they can list those on the bottom of the form.
Seems tilted.
So I don't know if there's an overall master list at all.
Right?
Seems a little tilted as to being fair, but I would love to see.
There's not, there's not a master list of preferred. But departments can request on the bid form that direct solicitation be sent to certain local firms if they want.
Can, Phil, can Anadog, couldn't we provide Anadog with a preferred master list for each department? I mean, would that be, I would think that'd be something to make sure that they have, they knew who wanted to solicit.
You could do it that way. They just, because sometimes there may be, in other words, everything gets advertised. And rather than relying on them seeing your newspaper, you can direct solicit. You can ask that mailing the bid, a copy of the bid be mailed to specific finish to make sure it's sealed. And that's to be fair.
They haven't accurately advertised many of our bids.
Let's forget, we're looking at...
Well, that's if you just go to the library, it's a fact. So with that fact, I don't know how well we're being represented by Anadog County or any of the people in good faith preparing bids or RFPs that are very time consuming and are prepared in good faith and aren't even gonna get looked at anyway, or don't have any knowledge that they're needed if they're not advertised in the papers that we have determined as our local.
Which is legitimate concern.
Yeah, I think my understanding is that's something.
It's a huge concern.
It's something I think that we would be looking into.
I mean, it borders on legal concern at this point. I just feel our contract, I just don't feel comfortable.
Okay, so for this, this resolution we have here, do we feel comfortable in moving forward without seeing the result? I mean, is everyone comfortable with the bid on this? Or bid bid, sorry to go on this?
I don't.
Is your party to quotes?
Uh, sorry, quotes. So that's what I'm saying, we want to change the wording, and I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable voting on this right now. It's listed as bids, we don't have bid results.
I agree with that point, it should be in a package.
So, yeah, again, if we want to, does this need to be done for this?
This is a timeline.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This is a time sensitive project, that all these need to be done by the end of this year. So I can get the, there was three people, I think, that, that bid on that.
Well, given it's a bid, we'll just get a little better.
If you're trying to move forward, you can have that added in the file packet so that everybody sees it before it's voted down.
Is that, is everybody comfortable to have, to have that provided before we vote?
Does it have to go to the floor again?
Well, this, with this one? So is this a bid or a proposal? If it's a bid, this has to be the lowest bid.
These were quotes.
These were quotes.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is not a choose the lowest, this potentially could be, I mean, it's only ten thousand, so it is below our threshold.
Right.
Just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that.
I mean, incorporate that in the motion, I'll make it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so everybody understand the motion that Laura said is making? Okay, so awarding, awarding to this, assuming?
And that, that the quote results will be added into the package.
And then at that point, if there's an issue, we're gonna have to have to go to the floor to discuss it. Wait a minute, no, we're not gonna go to the floor, are we?
It's a resolution. It's a resolution.
Alright, let's make, for this one specific, we'll make a resolution, we'll bring it to the floor, if there's an issue, we'll deal with it there.
And going forward, we would have everything.
We'll have it in the package.
Right.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Same rate of initiative? We have a motion in a second. Look for a vote. No further discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, thank you.
Can I just bring up, I agree with Ray, what are we doing about this newspaper and not being able to have fully advertised? And how is this gonna impact us? And can we change this for the future?
I am looking into the advertising mystery.
Okay. And if it does prove that they haven't done it properly, are we gonna be held liable for anything?
That's executive session.
Okay. Okay, we have further conversation about that. Okay, moving on, anything else on resolutions today? If not, we'll move on then to, that is the bid report, which was a part, right, of our resolution, so we really got to more on the bid report. Recommend appointing to Environmental Management Council, this does not require a resolution, is that why it's in committee review? Okay, great. If we, I think everyone has had an opportunity to review. We're looking to appoint by recommendation of that committee, Lori A. Mangano Cornelius. Let me see, let me look, let me look for a motion. To appoint?
Make a motion, please.
Alright, and a second to go to discussion? Morse, thank you. Alright, so discussion, is there any concern or discussion about this appointee as recommended by the chair of that subcommittee? I'm not, look for vote, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, let's move on to our updates for the day. Jump right to David, you wanna start along?
Yes. Dave, Owen's in, Jan are here today to give you a little update on some of our marketing efforts. And while they're getting that set up and doing that, I'm gonna go see if...
So David's gonna be giving an overview of our digital marketing program, some of the highlights from last year, and the area that we put a lot more emphasis on, and that tourism marketing program in two thousand and eighteen. We talked about that during some of the committee meetings, some of the grant money that we received to put more emphasis and develop more of a strategy on digital marketing. So he's going to give the results of that, and also an update on where we are for the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen.
So, the background for a lot of the digital stuff, other than the fact that everyone's on digital platforms, one of the benefits is it allows us to track everything that we do. And we are, you know, part of that development, we're thinking in terms of customers, we're thinking in terms of getting visitors here. That's the basis of all our discussions. And as, as well, you know, how can we position ourselves for future grants and things like that? So there's reporting functions, all of this as well. But at the base of it, the idea is how can we be doing advertising and then be able to take a look back at our actual strategy? So that's how this presentation is kind of set up. This is just some digital stuff that we did last year. Just some stats here, if you can read through them. But, you know, we've seen that overall, we are, we are part of the trends of today, even though we are a niche market in terms of getting visitors here and spending, it's, people are responding to us the same way that they're responding to, that they would buy sneakers online. So we're trying to use a lot of actual data out there and then research industry data as well, so that we understand when we run these campaigns, you know, are we below the industry norm or above? How are, how are we doing? And what can we do to optimize these campaigns? When we, when we say digital advertising, we're really talking about Facebook, Instagram, AdWords, YouTube. These are platforms that are considered proprietary. We have audiences on these platforms, so we have an actual face, if you will. Our brand is there, we have a logo, we respond with people, we do organic posts, which means we post content daily without putting any money behind it. But then, in addition to that, we also run campaigns, which is basically, we've determined audiences on these platforms. And these audiences are determined by various demographics, whether it's focusing on optimizing based on things like gender, past spending, trends, geo-tagging. So we'll actually go in and create these audiences based on data that we have, or some of it is pretty obvious, like for example, we do snowmobiling. We know that the Tug Hill is an area that we can compete with. So we, we feel that, you know, everything southwest of us, especially down in Pennsylvania, it's a really great open market because the hill, they promote a lot themselves. We can take advantage of that by staying ahead of yourself now and drive times. So it's kind of the background behind all this. These are the stats from this year. Every year, obviously, we want to be these things, but we also have to understand that there are trends within digital marketing. Like, for example, seventy percent of our people are looking at our site mobile right now, which is about what the average is industry wide. So we just wanted to go through and kind of talk about what we're done this first quarter now on Facebook particularly, just to take a kind of a highlight and show you exactly how it is we create some of these things and kind of show some of the stats compared to last year. But first, we want to give a little bit of background. We've, we've, we've done a lot with Facebook and we're continuing to do it, and these are some of the reasons. The third bullet point being one of the, one of the big ones, Facebook is growing. People in, in, in my demographic would say that ads are becoming more relevant, which is actually totally changing the ad experience of today. So people are actually starting to get to the point where they're more excited to see ads, where they get an ad and it's in line with their interests, it's in line with the content that they've already been searching for. So it's just a fluid experience at that point. So we're trying to fit into all of this. As we create content, which is a really big part of this, we have to walk that line between how much of our budget do we put towards content, how much do we put towards audience building, how much do we put towards the actual ads? Because what's the point if you put a ton of money behind a phishing ad that pushes tons of people to your list of charters, but everyone stays on the page for like three seconds because there's no content that they can actually engage with and make that final decision on, yes, I actually want to take that charter trip? So that's some of the background work with. Here are the strategies and goals that we kind of talked about at the beginning of the year that we're really trying to focus on. These aren't, it's not a huge leap from last year, but I would say the biggest one is to focus on audience growth. We're trying to create an organic audience on these platforms, so that when we do posts, we already have people interested who are following us, so we don't have to put money behind it. And this is based, this strategy is a change based on some of the changing algorithms in Facebook and Instagram. They've tried to level the playing field in terms of content, so that basically, you know exactly what you're gonna get based on what you spend, which, you know, they're a business, that's how they're running things, we have to try to get ahead of the curve. And by building an audience, that's one way of doing it. You'll notice that we're running twenty seven campaigns this year. I mean, that's an estimated, we ran twenty five last year. I would like to point out that it's actually a big jump, because last year, it was the first time we could really run Facebook campaigns for a number of years pretty regularly. And we, we tried some new things out. We tried really honing in and being very targeted. This year, we were able to group some of those things. We are running like a, a campaign that focuses on summer in general, which kind of puts a lot of these pieces in there. It's not enough just to run, we were finding, you know, we can run a, an ad that pushes people towards our links to the three state beaches, along with that there, for example. That doesn't complete someone's expectations when they're planning a trip. We have to kind of create some content behind the scenes, some pages on our website that are unlisted, that these ads point towards, that then link out to other pages. The idea behind it all is to give people an experience. So even though it's twenty seven, it's actually a really big leap because we put some of those together and then we found other areas that were being missed last year that we're trying to bring to the forefront. And a lot of them too, we're trying to focus on all areas of the county. That's a really big thing for us this year. We want to, we want to make sure everyone's covered. I can read through some of the campaigns that we have scheduled near the end here. And then bite-sized content, going back to that other, the other stat, you know, people's, people are only watching like ten second videos today. Like, people aren't even watching your thirty second typical ads anymore. So how can we create content that we can then reuse, we can repurpose? We're trying to think in that way. Here are actual impressions reach. You'll notice last year, we had, at the end of the year, we had about two thousand, two point five thousand followers on our fishing page, we now have over five. And over thirteen on our, on our regular page. We're hoping to get those way up this year, so that we can, every time we post something that's relevant to that audience, that there's the opportunity to actually have a conversion, which is measured for us by visitors actively. that there's the opportunity to actually have a conversion, which is measured for us by visitors actively coming and spending money here.
If I could just interject there, we have two different Facebook pages that the Tourism Office maintains. One is an overall, as we go county, focusing on all different aspects of the visitor attractions and activities and things that visitors will be interested in, sunsets, you know, events. And then the other one is specifically for fishing and Lisa Gray in our office maintains those. She's very good at when someone likes a page and interacting with that. And that's part of the reason that we were able to double the audience in that page last, in the fishing page last year. And it's, it's been a really successful strategy for us.
And that's one thing that I love New York, that's interesting too, when you're not sure.
Reach versus impression, what's your, what's it, what are you defining there?
Reach and impressions, it's, it's defined by Facebook, so these numbers are just, we're just compiling based on what they give us. But an impression is basically every time someone sees that ad or that post in this case. And a reach is the actual different individual. So a one person can have only one reach, but they can have multiple impressions from the same ad. So that, that, it's, it's a good gauge next to each other of how many people are in that demographic that could potentially have a conversion versus how many times they're actually seeing it and interacting with it. And hopefully, the more times that they see it, the more likely it is they're actually gonna engage, but. And there's all kinds of other stats that are available. I feel like these, these ones are ones that we're gonna continue to report on, they make a lot of sense. This is not just the ads, this is everything, just so everyone understands that, there's a difference. The goal is to get our pages without the ads to be comparable, looking a number of years back to when we were running the ads. So that we're always building up to something, so that we're spending less money and we're getting more impressions. Do we have time to watch this video, it's like fifteen seconds? I'll give you ten seconds. Your loss. My attention's gone. Oh, I don't know if this.
So this is one of the videos that was created out of that money we received last summer from the New York Marketing.
So super short, this is something, I know some of you have seen the thirty-second version, this is something we then run on Instagram. The idea is that if it's something that someone likes, then they could go to our YouTube channel, they can watch a thirty-second version, they can watch a two-and-a-half-minute version. And then underneath those, it all links back to our website, to the list of actual charters, so.
And there's also a longer one too, there's a lot of different pieces that came out of that one campaign.
Isn't that something that we're putting on the website?
Yes.
Yes, because I think I saw something about when you were building it and I saw that. And I showed the people on the boat and going, yeah.
You mean the county, the county website?
Yeah. The tourism site, we had a link to that, yeah. We've been trying to.
You asked me about the, you were asking about the government site, county government?
Yes.
No, this, this won't. There, there may be some clips within it, but it won't be this video.
Okay. I saw some video and I thought they were talking about it being part of the website, but I guess not.
It will probably be on our page. We'll link out to our website and it will have some.
It'll have something under, okay. But I remember seeing a video that was a little bit, well, it was longer and it was showing, yeah. And the, because.
It could even have been a placeholder too, because we don't have any.
She's talking about the generic Lake Ontario.
Yes.
Yeah.
That she saw.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we've been trying to do is, is when we produce something or when our partners have something produced, put it on the tourism site or the county site to as, to let people know that it's out there and then they can choose if they wanna, you know, watch it hopefully.
It was, it was a nice video, you know, it really was, I mean, it's something that, you know, it, it makes you really feel like you're really married. You know, that's the whole idea, so it's nice.
The, the charters that you list at the end of this, do they subscribe to that?
You want to know what's a product?
Is it getting any cost for them to advertise on our site?
Oh, no, they're listings, the charters listings are free and the guides are free. As long as they're in compliance with the license requirements that they're supposed to have, we, we list them on the site and then our brochures for free. It's hard to keep up with everyone and that is an ongoing issue that we face. But we, we try to include everyone that we're aware of and make sure that they meet the requirements. And then as some guide business, we try to keep them updated too. And it's pretty, as long as they're in compliance with their requirements that they're supposed to fulfill.
So we have general categories like lodging, food and beverage, his- historic sites, fishing-related businesses. And if that business is in compliance with all the rules and regulations that they should be, charter captain has a Coast Guard license, the hotel has up-to-date with the vet tax. Everybody gets a free listing. They can purchase ads in our books or on our website if they want to. But there's a standard that everybody gets for free if they're in the tourism business.
Now, who's researching if they're compliant?
Um, our staff does, we have a form that we ask them to fill out if they're new to make sure that they either have a Coast Guard license or a D E C guide license, depending on requirements.
So they're, 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 they're doing that, providing it to you, you don't have to go out cold turkey.
Uh, well, sometimes.
Keep gas in their boat or anything.
No.
Sometimes it's more work than others.
Yeah. But we, you know, we try to, we try to make sure that we have the information that's, that we're promoting in a responsible way.
Thanks. Ultimately, they're, they're super interested, like when they see these ads, sometimes they'll be like, wait, they'll go back through on that landing page, if they're not listed, we'll hear about it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but anytime someone's aware of someone that it should be listed and they're not in our database, we want to know about it because then we can follow up and send it on the forums and, and it, it happens definitely. There's a lot there that we want to know about.
And then one thing we're doing differently this year is we're, we're hosting a meeting with all the charter captains and guides to, to give them a presentation. This is everything that we're doing to promote your industry sector. We'd like to know what you're doing and how can the two of us play off what we're each doing to better maximize the results and maybe decrease the expense.
I can read through really quick the, just the campaigns we are gonna be running this year. We're running a follow, like a follow-us, it's, that's not the best title for it, but it's an audience boosting campaign. Facebook for our general page, we ran a steelhead fishing page that ended up being an audience boosting page. Ice fishing, snowmobiling, one on Derby Hill, charter fishing, strawberry picking, history in Oswego County, which is gonna hopefully have a, a big landing page that we're designing right now for it. Beaches in the county, summer in Oswego County, the North Shore, Oneida Lake, fishing, audience boosting. That's, that's particularly fall fishing, San River fishing, actually, I think those might combine, but apple picking, fall fright nights, Christmas tree picking, and then for the events, we're running, these pushed to our calendar, we're running one for the Snow Fest year, the Pro-Am, Harbor Fest, Jazz Fest, County Fair, Paddle Fest, Deer Fly Run, Budweiser Classic, L- Locober Fest, Apple Fest, and Dirt Week.
That's great. Uh, David, uh, that, that group that the, is that set in stone if there's something else that comes up that makes sense? Is that something we could change in the fly, is there room for that?
Yeah. We have actually a line item in our budget that's set up specifically for that. Because we found that too, if, if someone is doing an event that has a great attraction or whatever, but they're having trouble near end, then they can come to us. We did that for W P B S, they wanted something additional, or when they, when they ran, what is it called?
Fishing behind the lines.
So if we come across any of their, of not-for-profits has an event or something along those lines, except that maybe fills off the stage, that's something that you can contact you about, how much heads up would you really want if you do something like this? I don't know how in-depth these are, is it just?
If it's, we try to, we try to promote things that have regional value. So our, our thought is, you know, we have a circumference away from the county, which is generally in our industry, like three hours is what we'd say, up to six for certain things. But if it's not pulling people from outside the county into the county, then we leave that to the chambers, we leave it to the individual whoever. But if it's pulling people into the county, it's bringing money in, so we're behind it, business.
Okay. Great.
Can I ask the tourism question? This comes from my daughter, who's a bike enthusiast. There's been a lot of attention now shifted to the fat tire bikes. And in Fairhaven, they have an amazing trail that was an old rail bed. And there's even a bike club forming and it's, it draws some people. She even said the Herkenen Forest, the amount of bikes that came in from New York City were amazing. She said there's a rail line from Fairhaven to Oswego that's kind of just abandoned, don't know the status of it. But given it's a seaway trail, I mean, that might be a really interesting path. I mean, eventually, if you could have an event, the amount of people, she said, if that is developed correctly and the amount of bikes that came in that were worth a fortune from all over. I mean, she's done like the bike race at Rudy's, all right, she, she's done that, she, she loves the biking. But she said this fat tire is amazing and it's, it's coming on, you can go off the trail with it.
You're a.
They're not destructive, you can go on the snow. And she said it just seems so disappointing that you can't, it's dangerous now texting and so many people get hit on bikes. But if you could ride from say Fairhaven to Oswego or from Oswego to Phoenix or wherever the opportunity arises. They're going to Lake George and they're getting on the old rail bed and they actually have specialized bikes that go on the rail bed. You can go like fourteen miles restaurant along the way. I mean, I just think it's a nice attraction that we worth looking into.
That's the whole Jack trail perhaps.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I mean, there might be money available for it, but she said it's really hot.
There's been some great money available for those former trail line.
Rail to trail, yeah.
That's great.
Depends on what, what's happened in a lot of places where the, where the railroad bed wasn't deeded over to a municipality. The original documents that the railroad had have a, a regression clause. Clause, clause in there, I can't say the legal term, that when it stops being used for rail purposes, it goes back to the original property owner. So a lot of times while there had been a rail line there, bits and pieces of it now have gone back to the original deed holders of that property.
We've got one on the west side of the, all the way to Oswego here too, same way, abandoned railroad. And I agree that they could be used.
Same, we've got some beautiful ones in Poplaw, just amazing.
I mean, they roll through, right through the whole countryside.
Yes.
Arch Creek and so on, right on through.
Yeah, it's, I can tell you even places like Alaska, they've spent money to put conduit, like we would for a creek, under a road to create rail tra- uh, bike trails.
Really?
Big money, yeah.
Yeah. Well, she said you got the potential to pull people from all over.
Sure.
And like the cidery in Fairhaven, it's now sponsoring a cycle group, so it's one of the destination stuff. But I, I just think it would be a really nice piece to add.
Winona, like we, there's two, there's a, there's duathlon and there's an actual fat bike race in the winter. And was it this year that they had the registration? There's certainly every year people from Ontario coming down, there was someone from Iowa, according to Matt, Westerland, right? So we've expanded that geo for, for that particular ad, we've actually expanded that. When you're, when you're designing these ads, you're either expanding interests in order to, to get a number of people that you want within that audience or you're expanding the geo-target and you're decreasing the number of interests. So that's what we've done in that case.
She said it sorely lacked food vendors, a lot of people were exiting early, but she said if food trucks were brought in and she said even like higher-end, because you had a higher-end clientele, she got a ton of people from Manhattan. Some people shipped bikes ahead, some people rented from bikes chaps in Rochester, picked them up and brought them in. So they went through quite a bit of effort to participate. She said there were a lot of people there with twenty thousand plus bikes per bike trip. And, but she said you couldn't get anything to eat or drink, there was a mad scramble, bathroom facilities should be better. And she thought you could hold the crowd longer, get more, even any type of vendor, she said, would be, would have been of great interest.
Yeah, we will be working more with them. They recently got a grant to help develop some of their facilities there. And we've been working pretty closely with them on their marketing, but as one of the things we have scheduled is to.
She said gourmet, organic hot chocolate vendor could probably have retired from what I'm trying to make here. That was the crowd though. You got an organic, healthy, higher-end crowd. And she said everybody started to exit because there were thirsty, hungry bathroom facility.
Yeah.
But that was her observation, got great potential, needs to be honed in.
So that's, that's really good feedback, yeah. But like I said, we'll be, just one of our plans that we have scheduled over the next few months is to meet with the president and the person that's working on marketing with them.
You know, food trucks would be cool, I mean.
And there are a lot of them around.
Fun, and if they were some people now, you know, because I'm sure it's a slow time. Maybe, you know, but she said you gotta go a little higher and down the food.
And they had no latte and laboratories.
There you go.
There we go.
Organic, this is an organic crowd.
Okay.
That's great, that's really good. I like hearing new ideas too, so I'm glad you took this.
That's great.
That's her idea.
Well, there's so many trails that are abandoned, there's so many railway things.
It would be so nice if we could expand it and maybe hold an event.
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys have any more on that?
I don't think so.
Thank you very much. I gotta tell you, it's real exciting being on the board here to hear, you know, all the information you guys are working on here, the, the new ideas and kind of new targets, something that maybe we haven't done or haven't done quite as amazingly as this. So, David, thank you, thank you guys for doing that, it's awesome. All right, wonderful.
So good segue into that discussion and David's point about drawing people in to the county as opposed to just informing people in the county about what's going on. The county owns and has leased to the city of Oswego, softball fields behind jail, Churchill Road. And softball participation dropped off significantly over the last several years. The city went out and found a vendor, company, I believe their name is Champions. And they've really taken on the challenge to reinvigorate those fields to what they, with the contention that they had. Last year, they brought in several tournaments, a couple of them I know, every hotel around here was full. This year, they're proposing fourteen events, over seven thousand players, a couple thousand coaches. They're predicting a total of, with family members, like thirty thousand participants for those fields. And when you do the math about hotel rooms, restaurants, all the various pieces to go into a tournament, their projected impact is one point, almost one-point-three million dollars from those softball fields. The issue is, in order to be able to host events like that and continue to draw those crowds, you need to have quality facilities because there's a lot more out and a lot of these people travel. I know when I was playing softball, it wasn't unusual to go to Ohio or other places for tournaments. But the facilities haven't been taken care of properly for quite some time because interest was waning and revenue decreased every year and so they just couldn't keep up with those things. The county owns the property and the facilities, which we have leased to the city. But I'm gonna just share my opinion, opinion with you that there's potential there and we have a vendor who is willing to work hard to maximize that potential. I, I feel we have some responsibility to participate in the upgrades of those facilities. Make them safe and desirable so we can get more visitors in this little niche market. So they need things like fixing up the parking lot and walkways and new lighting. So they need things like fixing up the parking lot and walkways and new lighting and bathrooms. They've gone through and done a bit of an assessment, landscaping and security. And just general upgrades to the fields, so. For your consideration, I think that it would be beneficial to the county with respect to some increased tourism to consider partnering with the city to make some investments there.
Can we do sponsorship, I'm sorry, can we do some sponsorship with that? I mean, I, I know a lot of times I've gone to the Little League games and stuff and there'd be sponsorship banners along places and stuff to get some additional funding to make this, you know, an improvement, didn't know if we are capable of doing that.
So through the tourism budget, we have tried to avoid being what you would think of as a sponsor for events because if we go down that path, everybody who has any kind of fundraising event or community event is gonna want us to be their sponsor.
No, I meant just the opposite, not us to be a sponsor, for us to bring in a sponsor.
Well, I think Champions is working hard on that, made it, done that pretty successfully in their first year. But the events themselves cost money to, to host. And a lot of times the sponsorship money goes to that, you got prizes and referees and all kinds of other things, umpires in this case. I don't know that they can raise the kind of money they need through sponsorships in the time period that they're trying to raise it.
Okay.
This was a long-term capital project that they said, oh, you know, if we get five thousand a year, ten years, we get a lot done. But people aren't gonna continue to come back if they have to wait ten years for the lights to be bright enough to play softball at night.
Okay, so more or less the sponsorship is their programming and the county and the city would pick up the infrastructure.
Pretty much.
So speaking to that, you said timeline's kind of important here. I mean, is this something they, we wouldn't be looking at a CFA application for, maybe some sort of church enough with what, would it be parks or would it go through?
Yeah, I have a meeting scheduled with Rob Cordino, who is, I think he's the president of council.
Yes.
So he's, he's heading this up for the city. And he and I and some other folks are scheduled to get together to talk about this. And I'm more about, you know, the urgency of some of these things. Some might be applicable for CFA, but even with the CFA, you need a match.
Well, sure.
So perhaps, you know, an investment by the city and the county could provide the match for the CFA application to do some of the things that could be longer-term improvements.
And I know as, as at legislature, we've talked a number of times about the idea of how we would like to see more opportunities to do match because it means we're tapping more into those additional funds and really getting the more bank for our buck. So, you know, personally, I'd be very excited to see an opportunity to say, you know, to partner with whoever to get something like this done. I mean, we're talking about new, new opportunities here and to, you know, bring in like you said, over a million dollar impact. If, if that's sound financial investment, that's what we're looking for.
I have a tractor trailer and we can't find one, so I'm gonna be the fourth list. Thanks for me.
Thank you, we're in. So that's great.
Well, they're carving up some points too, they've got a place we have a tractor here for. It goes out there and events can be held there, you have facilities and everything, there's, you know, just to have an event. You don't necessarily have to be driving, drive an event, it can be an event.
So you're saying we should bring the band Fish and have a concert there, is that?
There we go.
And how, how detailed and specific is their, their wishlist or at least the, the items that have been broken down? And, you know, can we, can we take that and look at what our, our highway department maybe can do?
Yeah, so.
This year versus something that, you know, new fences maybe next year, but I mean, a parking lot repair, I can't believe we can't get over there and do something like that.
They, they've been somewhat specific in here, for example, a security booth and lighting, three thousand dollars. Two thousand for fields, forty-five hundred for millions, thirty-five hundred for landscaping, eight thousand for just sports fields upgrade. So they have broken some, some costs out here, forty-five thousand for equipment offensive.
In the history of that, that lease. The lease terms does place all maintenance and upkeep responsibility on the city. We agree to that, just part of the background.
Alright.
So.
I'd say it's similar to them with their all day going.
But the question is, is this maintenance or is this expansion? I think that's, that's part of what we're looking at here, I mean, if we wanna offer the bare bones that it has been for years. We can maintain that, but if we want this thing to be a draw, then I think we need as a, as a whole, the whole area to say we're willing to invest in this.
Yeah.
So what would be the, the private department that would look at this the next step?
Well, I think before any department could look at it, they would need some guidance from the legislature to say, we determined that this is a priority and we'd like to see if we can't find a way for you to participate. And is it within your budget to do so?
So Dave, what would you need from, I mean, would you, Phil, I don't know, would you need a recommendation from this committee to pursue that? Is that something, do you need more than just Dave saying, hey, this is a important piece of my plan for what my department's looking to do this year?
Well, I need to know if this management company is, if these fields are open for public use or just tournament club use. And that's a private use, and it's gonna make all the difference. It's gonna make a lot of difference what we can do, whether I could use any tobacco money towards it. Cause we're gonna have little bits left over and different capital projects can be diverted to something that could be done relatively quickly. But I can't, I can't use any of that money for a project that is mostly benefits of either a private or nonprofit, it's kind of a public, public regarding.
So maybe the, that could maybe a portion of it, because you look at maybe the parking lot, which would be, I would assume public use, but it is inside of a fence, so maybe that's tricky to say. That might be, that might be something to talk about.
It's not really a public park, the only reason to go there and park would be for the tournaments.
Walk through, you know, walk through the woods or, you know, it's also stuff up there that we offer, right? Isn't there other trails there?
Get where I'm leaning, is there a, is there a, a basic fundamental responsibility we have to the infrastructure? Cause we own the property.
Right.
Versus what is covered on the lease. May, maybe we could touch those things, it's an enhancement.
So do you need anything from us now? Cause if it is gonna be a CFA thing, you're gonna wanna move pretty quick, but.
Yeah, no, I'm throwing it out there for your discussion and consideration. You can say, you know what, Dave, you're right, sounds like the more people might come, but not anything we're interested in doing or capable of doing for some of the reasons that Phil brought up.
So something, you need some more information that you're getting, you gotta be scheduled, Phil, you're gonna maybe do a little?
Need to find out, you know, whether it's public or, you know, can anybody just go in there and do a pickup game? First facility locked all the time and that it's, and it's exclusive to these tournament clubs and, you know, that's gonna make a difference.
Good point.
Is it part of any park that we have, it's not considered part of the park?
Okay. Great, thank you, Dave, that's excellent. Anything else, Dave? Is there a website update, do we need a website update? At least a little while, so.
Put me on the spot.
Just even a quick one.
We are working right now to implement features, so I'm waiting to hear back from departments to give us a list of features. This was a pre-provided list, all department heads and their main website contact that basically says, in order of priority, what do you want to be included? Migration is also happening as we see, which means that at some point in the near future, we'll have like a very, very what they call beta version of the site basically, which will be similar to the previous site. But without any of the new features, it'll basically be a reorganization and redesign, if you will, of the old site, so.
Okay. With very long, as far as timeline goes, are we about where we expect it to be, seems we might be a little bit behind, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, we're, we're a little behind and some of that is, you know, this. Everybody has important things to do to deliver services to residents within their own jurisdiction. And while this is gonna be nice and helpful for them, it's not everybody's priority. So Dave's been pulling a lot of teeth for, for months. And so for example, with services, we're talking about things like being able to make payments online or purchase things online. And I think we've got a meeting with the treasurer coming up and their vendor. So treasurer already has a vendor to be able to pay taxes and we're gonna try to get an agreement with them to use for the other folks as well and integrate that in. And then it's, you know, you've got twenty-some departments and very few have the same interests or features. So, so like, if we only offered four, that challenge would be less. But it was a list of what, maybe eighteen different features?
Totally, it was a lot.
Yeah.
So as far as the paying the bill, are we paying upon completion? Or are we paying monthly, like say if it takes us five years to put this thing together, are we paying more than we budgeted for? Or are they gonna do the same?
No, we have a schedule based on milestones.
Okay, got it. It won't take five hours. I know. More exaggeration of the point, I was just trying to figure out, is this something where if I, us delaying, will we pay more, I guess was the question. Okay, cool, thanks, Dave. Is there anything else from you, Dave, are you good?
Alright.
I'm gonna ask about Erica.
What do you have for show and tell? Okay.
Alright.
Hi, everyone, I'm Erica Schreiner from Osweago County Soil and Water District. And I just wanted to provide an educational program update briefly. Part of my job in addition to natural resources management is to work on environmental education program for the county's youth. Coming out of Earth Day and Arbor Day last week, we just worked with Cornell Cooperative Extension of Oswego County to do our annual plant a tree program. And I brought just a bundle of fifty tree seedlings to show what we give out to students in grades pre-K through five. And these trees are funded through donations from Oswego County Federation of Sportsman's Clubs and Exelon Generation is our primary sponsor. So we work with Cooperative Extension, get the information out to the schools, the teachers sign up. We bundle the trees and then for the younger grade levels, we have coloring books that go with this. Teachers come and pick them up and distribute it to the students. And we've been doing this program for twenty-eight years and we estimate that we've distributed about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand tree seedlings. So I don't know the story of how all of them ended up, but even if, you know, fifty percent of them made it, we've added a lot of trees to the county.
We're gonna need that full report.
Yes.
Yes.
Where I am, with twenty-seven thousand. What I hear is stories from time to time, people will say they planted a tree in their yard and when the child grows, you know, it's a fairly large sized tree. So we're quite proud of working on that program through the years with the sponsorship and Cooperative Extension. The second program we have coming up is the Oswego County Environment, and committee members should have received the invitation and information packet for that event. It's coming up this Thursday, May second. And Environment is for high school students. They start studying in September when school begins and they study aquatics, current environmental issues, forestry, soils and wildlife. This year, the current issue is agriculture and technology. And so New York State also has an Environment program, so they put together a curriculum and outline. So that's what our local students are studying throughout the year for these subjects. And then in March, we had a workshop out at City to cover the subject areas, to kind of give the new students a little more information about the topics. And then on Thursday, we'll have six school districts out at Selkirk Shore State Park for this event. Again, it's for high school students, they work in teams of five, so it's kind of a unique type of competition. And they'll take hands-on exams, so what do I mean by that? I brought some show and tell items to go on with that. For example, at the forestry station, they'll use a Billmore stick to actually measure trees that are onsite at Selkirk. They may measure the diameter, they may measure the height of it, find out how many merchants full logs are in the tree and identify the tree by species. For some of the trees that aren't present at the site, we'll have wood samples that we'll bring with us. For example, red pine might be one of the species that they're asked a question about. Yeah, if anyone's interested in looking at that. So the exam, there are twenty-five questions, so some of them are hands-on as far as the items onsite, some of them are just strictly on paper questions. But at the soil station, we'll have a small pit excavated, so they'll be asked questions about soil horizons. So, you know, things that they do learn about in the classroom, but this is definitely a little more in-depth. And our goal is to promote them learning about the environment, spending time outside. And we do rotate this competition between Camp Polis, Camp Zerby, Envoy Four H Center, some of the different club sites owned by the Sportsman's Federation. Then of course this year out at Selkirk. So just to give them an idea of what natural parks and facilities are available right here in Oswego County. At the aquatic station, they might be asked to identify what nutlet this plant is from, so that would be the water chestnut and invasive species here in Oswego County. At the wildlife station, they might be asked to identify a muskrat from its pelp and its fake rubber droppings that I have. Scat is always, I try to bring that a couple times a year.
Those are scratches, no, correct?
Correct, yeah. Also at the soil station, another question, and this could also tie in with the current issue of agriculture. They may be asked about various agricultural practices, this one happens to be a contour strip propping, planting different crops to prevent erosion. So I just wanted to bring a few of the items with me to show to you as far as what the students will be doing. We out, we are outside, rain or shine, I know it's a kind of a soggy week. I thought you said a child girl, she would like to come out and check out the event, so we're looking forward to having you.
Really looking forward to it.
That's a squeeze dress for the weather because we never know, and it's always a little bit cooler out at Selkirk Shores. Thank you. And then the information packet that was sent through the committee, we do have an awful lot of local sponsors that help support this event. There is no charge to your participating schools other than transportation. However, this year, since we're at a state park, New York State does have a grant program in place to reimburse schools for transportation to a state park. So hopefully the schools will be taking care of that. And I would like to ask this committee, typically in the past, the committee has recognized the winner of the Oswego County Environment. We will name a winner on Thursday after they go through all the exams. And then that team of students usually comes to a legislative meeting and they do receive a certificate. So I was wondering if the committee would like to do that again this year, usually June.
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, so that's what we've got going on on the environmental education world. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer that and if anyone else is interested in stopping out, please do. We'd love to have you help us hand out rewards at times.
The children, how do they select it, is it just a school?
It's just like a club at the school, correct, just like a sports team, music team or music club. And sometimes this appeals to students that might not fit into the sports category, the music category. But other times, it's the students that, that do everything that are also joining the environmental club too. So it appeals to kind of both groups.
What age, ages do you teach?
So ninth through twelfth grade.
It's a, it's a real great event, I, I have a tenant myself, usually winds up in time for lunch.
Yes, and Marcel coming.
But.
Have you ever won marbles or? Yeah, have you ever won or do they usually teach you?
Oh, for running? They're, they're going. You know, bringing the fact that they, that, that beach out there was, we saved it, when people were hauling the sand to wherever, they were taking right out of there. And we saved that area and put it into a county beach initially, and then the state took it over. And all the livelihood to protect that particular area was put in place, they were ready to ship all that stuff out of there. And, and also the fact that there's camps on that island. You know, that island, that sandy island beach, it's quite, quite a natural resource. Even though some people did land airplanes on it, like me truly. But it's.
On purpose or camp?
Well, my private beaches, you know, drop in, we'll show them.
Oh, okay.
But any case, it worked, it's went.
Yeah, private beach. Hey, Erica, anybody else have any other questions?
I think my second grade teacher had a stick like that. He used it to measure and expand my attention.
He used it to measure and expand my attention.
Um, all right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks to Martha and you being around. I'll see you on Thursday.
Yes. Now I can get right up to where they're doing it, right? We can observe them doing it, learning and everything.
Correct. Yep, we just, with the map, uh, just follow right to the headquarters building and, uh, we'll have a, um, couple of folks on the lookout for our guests and I can escort you around to see the different stations.
Okay, that's what I was wondering how, what, where, where do I go when I get to Selkirk Shores?
Right to the, and, um, again, I can reset the map if you, if you would like me to do that.
I don't even think I've got a map.
Okay, so I'll make sure that you have a map. And then the main building there, um, it serves as our headquarters. And again, we'll have folks on the lookout for our guests and help direct you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any else have questions? Thank you, Eric. All right. Uh, we'll bounce it in and close it out here. We'll go to Phil and you can give us an update on the National Marine Sanctuary.
Yes, uh, I just included in your packet the, uh, informational materials that were used in the press conference. So that if you're asked questions, you have a background on it. It also gives you the, uh, address online for the submission of public comment, that public comment here at the end of July 31st. We're also working with NOAA to develop sort of a talking points flyer for public officials and that could be distributed around the four county area to help promote people to show up to the, um, public meetings, but also to educate people at a time, uh, as to what this is and what it isn't. Uh, so I wanted you to have that background material. Uh, also I just wanted to, also include it because I wanted to thank, uh, Dave and Janet and their staff and a lot of the last minute work that went into bringing that press conference together, uh, that was organized by the congressman. The, the, particularly the press release that has all the information in it and some of these, uh, distribution flyers. Uh, so that's that. If you have any questions, uh, please give me a call. The public meeting, uh, in Oswego is gonna take place June 12th. Uh, but that whole week of June, NOAA may be here and all four counties holding meetings in the other counties as well and also meeting with specific stakeholder groups. And the week or two prior to that, they will have a research team here uh, doing some diving and, uh, getting images and doing their initial research, uh, in southeastern Lake Ontario. As this designation, for the, as this designation process starts, which could take, uh, you know, a couple of years to get through.
Okay, I wanna, uh, behalf of the committee, much that you're really thank Dave, your office for all you've done and specifically Phil for everything that you've done on this. I know this is, you know, the other one I think we've talked about was the Thunder Bay. This is gonna be Thunder Phil. I'm, uh, you know, I very much appreciate all the work you put into this. I know it's, uh, labor of love and, uh, excited to see it moving forward. So, thank you.
Actually, you've done a great job. And it's been a long time that he's been interested. We even sent him out with a, uh, and look at some of his stuff.
He came back up.
Uh, the other thing I have in the packet is the, uh, your quarterly, uh, expense reports for this particular department. So if you look through that, if you have questions now or if you have any other questions, contact Dave or I.
Is there anything you wanna highlight from that or if there's any questions we're gonna help? All right, well, great. Uh, there's no additional questions or comments. I would look for the appropriate motion. Second amendment. All right. Any, our discussion, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the name opposed. Thank you, everyone.